Okay, Mr. Mayor. It's time. As we say that... Let's see, is everybody here? And as Pastor Geis used to say, "Well, all important people are here." So it's time to start. Okay. As part of not on your agenda, I have shared this with the mayor and with a couple of members of the council. And we have put in front of you some very important news. I am proud and embarrassed to present this. And let me tell you, the police chief has nothing to do with my bringing this. In fact, she didn't even know that I had printed this until she walked into the room. I am proud for Richmond and I am embarrassed for the city that I love the most. And I shared with them that this is not okay. What's not okay is that look at this. I want you to look at this and I want the public to know what I'm talking about. It says Richmond's crime success serves as a lesson. And it is a glowing full report in the San Francisco Chronicle about two months ago. I'm sorry to put the date on this. I know the date, so I'll send that back to you. But it is just a glowing report of how successful Richmond has done with the single most important issue, and that's crime in the city. And so I want you to applaud yourselves for this phenomenal success because a few years ago, you wouldn't have gotten this article. This article would not have been written. So as I said, I did put Oakland on notice that this is not okay. Because I think two days later, they did their report on my city and it was not good. But we're trying. We're using Richmond as the model, as it says. Richmond is the model, and so there it is. Okay, to kind of recap where we have been. I have that somewhere. Is that on the screen? Is it on here?
Do roll call.
Oh, well, yes. Do roll call. Well, we are not even in session yet. Do roll call. Where's my cheat sheet?
Councilmember Bana. Vice Mayor Jimenez.
Presente.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Maybe he is.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Zapata.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Do you have that on the screen?
Green. Green is on.
Is that on the screen, where we've been? That's first. Okay. So for the agenda, we have the organizational chart, which we'll be sharing with you. Working relationship between the city council and staff, between and amongst you, a four-way, 360 kind of conversation. Discussion about what I heard when I did my interviews with you. We always have space for public comment, and then we'll talk about next steps, and then we'll go home. Okay, the next slide, please. We established some ground rules. You've heard these, you abide by them. We all try to do what it says, is be open to hearing each other. And two, being intentional about what we say. Try not to personalize our statements and try to make space for other people to make comment. And always, and always, and always, no personal attacks. My job is to ensure that that does not happen. Okay, next, any comments about that? Next slide. Here's where we've been. We met May 22nd, and we established after great effort and excellent work by all of you, six overarching goals. And underneath those, we had several sub-goals, if you will. And then on May 31st, we refined those and established our objectives that would support those. And then we voted in June on the prioritized goals and the corresponding objectives. And then in September, we accepted the priorities for '23, '24, '25, '26, and received a report on the timeline, the progress, cost, funding, metrics, et cetera. And then our last gathering was to discuss your rules and procedures. And you gave lots of input to that. You gave the charge to the staff to integrate your comments with the work that they had done and where they saw redundancies, and they are going to be coming back with a proposal to finalize those, and that is in the works right now. Again, we... The organizational chart, I think, is the next slide. It's hard to see, but it shows how the city is organized with, of course, the people at the top, and then the mayor and the city council, and your staff, the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk. And it also shows other organizations that you're responsible for. That's the... Can't read it. Go back. I can read it here more easily, probably. But I'm not seeing the full screen. You have stuff on the right of that. And I think it's the rent... What is that? Rent board, yes. And over here is, well, the city attorney, city manager, city clerk, and then the other programs over there. And then all of the departments, and you know how those are organized. Two deputy managers and the departments that are underneath those. So that's how we're organized right now. The next slide. You will recall that I did interview you, and I also interviewed the mayor separately for his input. And then I met with the city manager and the management leadership team. So what I did in this process was to ask several questions. One is, what do councilmembers need from the mayor? And then what does the mayor need from the council? What is needed from the management leadership team from the mayor and the council? And what the management team needs from the mayor and the council? All of those to be effective in our work. So here is what I heard. I made all of your statements not... Neutral is the wrong word. I tried to not associate your comments with the speaker. Several of you told me that that would have been quite okay. And I am sure that many of you will have some additional comments as we go through these. But for the purposes of at least getting us started, I deliberately simply removed a comment that may have identified the speaker. But what you said is up here. All I did was remove the speaker. And so what the councilmembers need from the mayors, what I heard is, the mayor is generally not available to meet. That it's difficult to arrange meetings. I heard a lack of substantive information from the mayor's office. Need more inclusivity in communications. I heard, other than litigation, who decides what goes to closed session? Can the city managers... Can the city council members, should be, initiate what goes to closed session? Great if mayor gave status report and kept council informed. Need more responsiveness and courtesy of responses. More effective communication. So I took the comments that I heard, and I collapsed those comments into these seven Now, any now need for clarification of what's up there, or any comments about what's up there? Or do you want to make a comment that's not up there? Anybody?
I would like clarification.
The mayor is asking. Yes, I can't hear you, though. Are you... Is your mic on?
I would like clarification on more inclusivity in communication.
I can't quite hear you. Is your mic on?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Go ahead.
I wasn't eating it.
Oh, sorry. True confession. So what is your question?
Yes. I would like more clarification on more inclusivity in communications.
Any comments about that? What I heard was that from some speakers, that they felt that they were not included in certain communications, that communications seemed to be bifurcated amongst certain councilmembers, is what I think I heard. I think that's what the comment was about.
Okay. I don't know how to attribute that, but this... These needs were elicited, solicited many months ago?
That's a very good comment, a question, absolutely. Because as I go through, that's a very good question.
So I'm interested in knowing, you know, whether or not there's been changes, improvements.
Very, very good. Because actually, as I was going through this, remember that I did this in November? I think I did this in November, when I talked to most of you. It's been several months. So for everybody now, and it's not your comment, but the mayor has asked a question. Would that still be a concern, that there needs to be more inclusivity in the communications? Or has that improved? What is your assessment? Whether you own it or not, what do you think about how that has worked? Councilmember Jimenez. I think I saw her first.
Okay.
But maybe not. Councilmember Jimenez.
I think like, in my experience, and I understand, the mayor's office has been a good communicator. I think one of the things that I really appreciate is staff, being able to work with the staff. The mayor, in my experience, and I don't know with other city councils, but is really providing staff time for items, working on different issues with some of us at the council. That has been a really good thing because we, as city council, don't have an assigned full-time staff. And he has been making available some of his staff for council consideration to issues that we work with.
So your comment is that with staff assistance, you feel that you've had adequate communications and access?
Yes.
Okay. And I need to apologize because I did realize when I came in here that you have been elevated since we last met. And this should say Vice Mayor. So would you please recognize the Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor Jimenez.
I have to say, hold it.
Oh, you edited yours? Okay. All right. Thank you. Other comments about that, or about any of the other boxes that are up there? Any thoughts? Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah. So I... Ooh. Is this now it's going to... Okay. Is that good? So I feel like it would be really helpful for me if these had some kind of indication of how many councilmembers were feeling this way about things, because I find a lot of these things on here that I don't agree with. And they don't... I want to make sure that it's clear that it's not representative of all council persons' experience, because the way that it's presented, it's like, we all feel this way. And I feel like that's... It's, you know, some of these things I agree with, and I would like to, you know, know how... What influence can we have on closed sessions? You know? That's something I would like to know. But I feel like I have a similar experience as the Councilmember Jimenez, that although I haven't worked on a number of projects with the mayor's office, I have been able to reach out to mayor's office staff to support me on things that I'm working on. And it's been helpful, especially as a new councilperson, to have that support. And I feel like, you know, the mayor's office has been really responsive. Maybe it's not me dealing directly with the mayor, because I know he's busy. But being, having his staff be available to support has been great, quite honestly. I do feel like this notion... This wasn't my comment of this status report of, like, idea to keep the council informed. I actually think that's a great idea. I know that the mayor works on a lot more, a lot of things, and it would be great to, you know, have some kind of way of knowing or being updated so we can kind of be in alignment or at least be knowledgeable. I think that would be a helpful thing. And then just a reminder, you know, because we're all councilpeople, you can't all, you know, talk about all issues. Like, it'd only be two people because the mayor is also a councilperson. So I know that some of this stuff, I'm not sure how we do it properly so we don't violate rules. That's all the comments I have.
All of the comments, except when we get to the staff, these are individual comments, but some of them were repeated by more than one person. But for the most part, what you said is what I captured. And you should recognize some of what you said, I hope, in at least one of them, because I tried to do that. But I did not say, well, two people said this and five people said that. But all of the comments that you made, I tried to capture, and I put them up here. But I didn't aggregate them and then say, a majority vote this way.
So maybe it's just important for people to understand that this may be a comment by one, in an experience of one...
Well, some of these are. Some of them were repeat comments.
Of one councilperson, not all.
Some of them were repeat comments, and I don't remember exactly which ones, but some of them had more than one person saying pretty much the same thing. Any other comments, clarifications, disagreements? You feel differently?
I would like to comment on the... Let's see. The great if mayor gave status report and kept council informed. I don't do that because of the Brown Act, but I do post on social media what my office is doing. You know, the former mayor, Mayor Tom Butt, you know, had an e-Forum that he used to disseminate information. But I do mine on Instagram, on Facebook, on TikTok. And as with the former mayor, if you didn't subscribe to his e-Forum, you didn't get the information. So if people want to be informed as to where I stand in terms of policies, what I've done, then I would suggest that they go to my website or go to the Instagram account, Facebook account, or TikTok to be better informed.
I think, first of all, I'm having trouble hearing some of you. Can you hear back in the back? Are you hearing clearly? You're hearing okay? All right, good. Well, I have an earring test, or I should schedule one. I think, Mr. Mayor, the comment was not about... And people should weigh in on this. None of these are mine. I think the comment wasn't about keeping the community informed. I think the comment was about the mayor giving a status report at the council meeting and keeping the council informed through that process about what the issues are. I think that was what was behind that comment.
Okay. I didn't understand. Go ahead.
Yes.
If I may. And I don't know if we can get clarification from the city attorney. Henry, I don't know if I've met with you in November now, so this is a long time ago. Any of these were my comments or not. But I do remember having a training at Cal Cities a long time ago that said, be aware of looking at other councilmembers' social media, because that could create a serial meeting. So while I appreciate... Yeah, I might see it, but I can't like it. I can't do something, interact with it. So I think we have to just be careful. And maybe there's another way. I don't know. And maybe the item right next to it, which is a closed session, maybe it's a... I don't know if it could be a closed session item where he gives high level of something. I don't know. Just putting it out there as a question.
Yeah, two... I think I have two responses. The first one is, that's correct. You can't like or comment on, you know, if you have multiple people, you can create a serial meeting. A Brown Act violation for commenting on his... Or liking, or not liking, or disliking a social media post by the mayor. In terms of what can be discussed in closed session, I mean, there'd have to be a specific... It would depend on the topic and if there's a specific safe harbor provision in the Brown Act to allow that. But, I mean, what about a... This is just a suggestion. I mean, but what about, you know, a BCC email to provide an update, but, you know, just an update and no comments or questions after it? I don't know what, you know, in terms of other ideas for communicating, you know, outside of a public meeting. Hi.
Councilmember Robinson, and then Councilmember Jimenez, and then Bana.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for... I was watching.
Just out of curiosity, because we're talking about social media, if we are reading other people's pages but not commenting or liking or anything like that, is that also a violation?
Reading is fine. It's commenting or taking action. That's my understanding, but it's more of the...
And, Mr. Mayor, you're keeping order.
Council... Vice Mayor Jimenez.
Vice Mayor Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say, and the... For... I think it's the communication, like, lack of substantive information from mayor's office is people, like, the council member wants to know each item that he's working on, because that could be also a violation of the Brown Act if he's working with two more councilmembers. So I think, like, if we have more information about what is the information that people want, you know? Because if it's information about how many meetings he went, I don't know, like, or... Yeah, like, what is that, the kind of information? Because they are specific items that he might be working with two city councils, and he reported on that is a violation of the Brown Act.
I agree with that. I mean, I think you can provide an update about what meetings you've attended, who you've met with. But in terms of, like, future projects, you're correct that if you can't collectively tell the whole body that you're working on X, Y, and Z policies, you know, if you're working with two other members on council, I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Well, but to be clear, if the mayor provides a written report to the council and makes that available to the public, and it's simply for information, we aren't suggesting that that's a violation, are we?
No.
All right. I just want to be clear about that.
I mean, it depends on the content of the report, but, yeah. I mean, I think, in theory...
No. But if the mayor said that he went to the League of Cities Conference, and there was quite a bit of discussion about opportunities for additional grants for homelessness, and that he was interested very much in that subject, and he gathered some material and he'd like to pass that material on to the council, as long as he publicly distributes it, and he isn't requiring any action of him, he's simply passing on what he did, and he met with BCDC, and they have a resolution that would do certain things, and he thinks that those would probably not be interested in... Would not be in the city's interest. And so he plans to bring forward at some point a recommendation regarding that, and he distributes it to everybody and doesn't have any side conversations with people about what that's going to be. If it's purely information...
I think that's...
That's part I want to get.
Is not pure information.
If it's purely information, and he's not asking for any action of any kind, and he distributes it to the public, everybody gets it.
But the way you phrase that, you said that you expressed my opinion on an item, and I couldn't do that.
About what your...
You said BCDC, and they had an item that you didn't think was good for the city. If I shared that opinion...
With the council.
With the council, then I would be breaking the Brown Act. So I think what we need is to come up with a policy as to what sorts of things I can share and what sorts of things...
Let's do city attorney.
I shouldn't. So it was Councilmember Bana, and then you.
Is this on?
I think so, yes.
This one's green is on.
If it's green, it's on.
Okay, it should be on now?
Yes, I think we can hear you. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we are on item A of the schedule.
That is correct.
Can I add one more element, please?
Do you want to add some comments?
Yes.
Should, Floris.
Thank you.
You aren't restricted to what you said then. And as the mayor properly pointed out, these comments are a good five months old. All of them are. Yes.
Thank you. I would like by... I would like to start by saying that I have great respect for our mayor. In the short time I've had to know him at personal level, I really respect the personal integrity, fairness, and sense of justice. And naturally, I would expect that to expand to the realm of mayorship, but unfortunately, I do not see it. Fairness is important because I'm sitting here, not as me, as a person. We are all sitting here as representatives of our constituents, our districts, people that we represent. So it's very important to consider equity for all residents of Richmond. They deserve fairness in every little aspect. I'm just going to bring up one example, and that is the list of appointments to regional committees, ad hoc committees, and liaison positions. That was just ratified. I voted for a two. It was on the consent calendar. On all the commissions and committees, Mayor Martinez has 15 positions. Vice Mayor Jimenez has seven positions. Councilmember McLaughlin has nine positions. Councilmember Zapata has 10 positions. Councilmember Robinson has nine positions. Councilmember Willis has five positions. And Councilmember Bana, representing District Four, has three positions.
Now, just for clarification, I heard your statements. What would you add to these comments up here? How would you phrase that?
Fairness and equity for all districts.
Fairness and equity for all districts in all aspects. Okay, we're recording that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, additions? And right now, these are all individual, and then as Councilmember Robinson asked a question, and I think I answered it, right now, these are all individual comments. Yes.
Sorry. I'm trying to chew that chip faster. If I can go back to the status report, maybe, since we can't do everyone because of the Brown Act, I'm so sticky there. Maybe figuring out, and mayor, a way to maybe giving us reports, if you're working on something within our districts or going to be working on something, I think that might create a little bit more balance.
Maybe if he's not working with...
Maybe he's not working with other people. All right. But maybe even then, like, try to see if we can incorporate that councilmember in that district, so they can feel that they know what's going on in case constituents ask. That way, we don't have to... Well, we will love to know everything. In the city, this might help in that.
I think, again, we're going to have to, and not now, this is rhetorical, we're going to ask the city attorney to provide some guidance, because I am getting twisted in my own head about what a status report is. If it's truly that, and it doesn't go beyond that, then my question, rhetorical now, is how does that conflict with the Brown Act?
Yeah. So a report...
And if it is public and is available to everybody.
And maybe also just meetings, like, he and I...
Everybody, meaning the council and the general public. It's included in the council pack, actually.
Like, he and I sometimes attend meetings for the port together. All right. So just a suggestion, they're continuing that kind of partnership.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Willis?
Yeah. Wait. Okay, this works here. Yeah, it was brought to my attention, I mean, one remedy for that potentially is we do do the reports of officers every council meeting. So if there's just like those highlight and updates that you just already shared and written down, you have two minutes, just like our city manager does her weekly reports at every council meeting. And, you know, those are very useful. And another thing is maybe a smaller version of the state of the city, like, maybe every quarter or bi-annual year, just like, hey, here's what we did in the first six months, here's what we did in the last six months, and that can inform next year's state of the city, too, if that's what more councilmembers want. what more council members would desire, and it could be a good way just to disseminate more information to the public that way too, if you were willing to take on that task. So, that's all.
We love the videos.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Videos, yes.
I just want to make a comment. The mayor added a comment that this happened, this, these remarks came several months ago, and he's right. And I would say, I don't remember who said what, I don't remember, you know, what I said, but I do remember having some frustration about not getting some responsiveness, but I do want to say that things have turned around in that regard. So, I think what you said is a good comment, and I would echo that, that things in terms of responsiveness have turned around, and I really appreciate that.
Let's make sure that that got recorded, Mr. Mayor, because this is not, you will get your turn. This is not a beating up on the mayor. And I also need to clarify that I did not share this with the mayor in advance, so he'd be prepared to beat you back, because he's going to have his turn in a few minutes. And it's good when we do this. I really hope that, as we go through this whole process, it's not just about all the stuff that you did wrong, but let's celebrate a lot of stuff that was done right, all the way around, all the way around. Yes.
If I may, to add to what Councilmember McLaughlin was saying as well, for the first square, they're generally not able to meet or difficult to arrange. He has a very busy schedule, so, but I found through his staff the link to his calendar, and guess what? We had lunch. All right, so that was the way to figuring out. We, yeah, we had lunch several times. So, it was through his calendar, so sometimes texting, calling might not be able to work, as we all are also very busy, but that link, the calendar link, that his staff shared with me, I was able to schedule the next day and schedule something there, so kudos, since we're giving some.
Our resident technical expert has just spoken, and he's given you a clue to how to do this. So, everybody listen. He's found the answer. Not surprising.
If I may, I received that link last month too, and I plan to use it often now.
Yes.
Very good. We're getting there. We're getting there. All right. Any other comments about what's up there? Any additions to put up there?
Yeah, I wanted to echo what Councilmember Willis said about the AB 123. I do mention things that I do at that meeting. A lot of things I don't mention because I did them in concert with other people who mentioned it for me. So, and some of them have been gracious enough to include me in their report and say, I was, I was here with the mayor, and so people know that, that I, you know, that was one of the things I did.
Very good. Okay, if no further comments, then we can come back. Let's move to the next slide. And now, I think, oh, no. Councilmembers, it's the mayor's turn, but he only has four slides. And what he needs is, he needs the council to see, he tries to be fair in recognizing the order of the speakers and adhering to the time rules. He needs acknowledgement that he is trying to do that. He needs the council to understand when they pull items or put items on the agenda, he is attempting to balance the timeliness of the issues along with the laundry list of things that are on the agenda, and trying to control the agenda and the meeting so that you aren't here until 1:00 in the morning. He didn't say all of that, I added that part. He needs the council to understand that sometimes it's difficult to get it right. I am a witness.
I.
To get it right, who raised their hands first? I'm standing right in front of you.
I'm raising both my hands.
And I depend, I depend on the mayor, because actually, I'm looking at the person who's speaking, and three hands have gone up. And when you look at that dais, the mayor is sitting in the middle, and so he isn't going to always get it right, and what he's asking is that do not take it personally, do not be offended, he isn't intentionally ignoring you, but when you're sitting basically in a circle, and you're in the middle, it's hard, I mean, you can, you can't see out of the side of your head. So, he wants your patience and understanding that when he gets it wrong, and you've had your hand up before somebody else did, and maybe you had it up for a few seconds before they did, he's not being deliberate in skipping over you. And then.
Well, I want to say that the council has done fantastic on all of these, and has given me time to come up with others.
Good. Did you all hear that one? Okay, so you can keep the list going, and you can add, now you can add today, too. And he needs to establish and maintain, and he needs your cooperation for a good rapport with the council members.
So, if I may share?
Yes, you add to your list.
And one of them is conciseness during meetings. I find that people say the same thing in four different ways. They use more language than is necessary to get the idea across. So, meetings would be much, much shorter if people could be more concise.
Be concise.
And then.
That would be helpful.
And then the other is awareness of what's already been said. A lot of times, a council member will say something, another council member will say exactly the same thing. So, we're hearing the same thing several times. Now, I'm sure that people will know whether or not where that person stands without that person having to say, you know, the same thing again, you know, especially when we vote.
Well, and one suggestion around that, because I think many times, people do want it to be clear that they support a previous statement, you can simply say, I associate my comments with the previous speaker, with Vice Mayor Jimenez. It accomplishes the same thing, without taking three minutes to do it.
And then the other one is staying on agenda topic.
Stay on the agenda topic.
Yes, uh-huh. We have a lot of meetings where there is tangent conversations that are related to the topic but not of the topic. For instance, we were talking about moving budget money, and instead of focusing on the movement of the money, we were focusing on, on the items that the money was being moved from.
Yes.
And so, and so we ended up, you know, having a very, very long conversation when we could have just moved the money quickly.
Okay. Did you hear that? Any comments or reactions to what the mayor is saying that he needs from you? There's general agreement? They'll let you know when they don't agree.
And then, one other thing. As a council member, I found it difficult to do all the prep work that was necessary, and I was retired. So, I realize that we have council members who work full-time, and we've had this discussion before, you know, the system is set up so that council members can't do due diligence because of the lack of time, you know. So, I would like to figure out some way for council members to be able to invest that time in figuring out all the details of the agenda. So, that's more on, more on the system than it is on the council members themselves. And then, I want to refer to some of the comments made. When I was a council member, I never, never interacted with the former mayor's staff, you know. I mean, I would, you know, the few times I went there, you know, they basically, you know, sent me somewhere else. And as a rule, it's not my staff's job to support council members, but they do. And especially when I'm working on an item with, with a, with a council member, you know, that's, that's basically when, when that collaboration happens, you know. If someone is sponsoring an item, and they want me to participate, you know, then, then I'll become engaged, or my staff will become engaged, you know. But generally, my staff has a lot of work to do, you know, and, and sometimes I fail, because they have so much to do and they're so generous with their time that, that they end up, you know, not reminding me enough times that something needed to be done, you know. I have a really busy schedule, and, you know, it gets really complicated, as you and former mayors should know.
Yes. Any other thoughts, things that you need, and you can come back, you can jot down notes, we'll come back. Okay, I'll write it. Councilmember McLaughlin?
I just want to say about the request to speak and the raising of the hands, that is a definite problem. I recall when Civic Center was revitalized, because we had been in a, in the temporary city hall in Marina Bay area, and we had a straight dais. So, part of the time when I was mayor, I was in that setup. And so, when we did the revitalization of Civic Center, I said, can you please make the dais in a semicircle, so, you know, you could look side to side easier? And they said, well, it's a very slight semicircle, as we all know, it's hardly a semicircle. So, they told me they couldn't do it, because there were poles here, or poles there, columns there, so they did some, somewhat of that. But the other thing is, we had, and I think I've mentioned this before.
You did.
A request to speak button, and that could be programmed, I understand, I think, into the system, and then you just press, and the mayor has a list of the order in which people requested to speak. So, I think that would be helpful, because I do sympathize totally about not having eyes all over your head, you know.
You can't do it. You did make that comment before, and I do not recall what the response was. Actually, I remember when you had that system, and the council members would, if they want to speak, and it would show the order in which you pressed that button. I don't remember what our answer to that was. Is our tech person here? Sue, is Sue here?
Yeah, she's here.
And while she's coming up, I'm going to finish my cookie. I didn't eat it.
Good evening, Sue Hartman, IT Department. When we spoke in this room about this the last time, we mentioned that there is a Phase Two and a Phase Three action item that will include additional features, one of which will be voting and request to speak. So, that is an action item that we have in place that's forthcoming.
Thank you.
Okay.
That will solve that problem. Okay, Mr. Mayor, any other comments before we go to the next slide?
Councilmember Willis.
Okay. Keep notes, though, because you have a chance to come back. Oh.
Yeah, yeah, he called on me, thank you. Yeah, I think the, you know, thing that jumped out for me on this list, that we could do better as, as a whole, is with the frustration of not getting our hands seen because of being in a half-circle, and also, you know, some of the things we're talking about bring up a lot of feelings, a lot of passion, but even still, I think we could all just work on making sure that we're not calling out in the middle of discussion before the mayor recognizes us. Otherwise, I notice it starts kind of creating a chain reaction, then folks start talking over each other, then more agitation builds, and it can get disorderly. It hasn't gotten too bad, but there have been moments where that calling out has led to a bit of disruption. And just in general, you know, we all come from this, at this job with our different biases, our different lived experiences, our different triggers too, but just making sure that we're all just practicing active listening, you know, even if we're appearing something that could be agitated or we don't agree with, but just doing active listening and giving everybody a fair shake to say their piece, and then make our decision from there. So.
Okay, good comment.
I do have one more.
Yes, sir.
I would like council to consider policy as a city primarily and as a district secondly.
Comment is, would like for the council to consider the city's overall needs first and district needs second. Did I?
Yes.
Repeat that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that. What, what does that mean?
The mayor said that he would appreciate if the council members would approach items thinking of the citywide interest first and district interests second.
Thank you.
Okay. Next slide. Now, whose time? What does the management leadership team need from the city council? And that's the mayor and the council. These are collective comments. I met with, I think there are 15 or so members of the MLT team. I did not meet with them individually. I had, I recall, two sessions and put this item before them. So, a lot of these are individual comments, again. I didn't ask them to vote and see, but this is what, this is what I heard. They need from the mayor and the council to be treated with courtesy, dignity, and respect. They need a consistent message of what the needs and expectations are of them. They need support, acknowledgement, and clarity. Further prioritization of goals, continue to refine those, and not add additional goals. That comes from the sense of just being on overload in addition to doing the things they need to do to keep the city running. Fewer meetings, so staff can focus on implementation of the goals and objectives. I guess there are five slides. Do you want any comments about these? Because there are going to be five, I'm not going to ask you, put all these up here and then go back and ask you to comment on them. Do you need any clarification on any of these? Comments about any of these?
No clarification, but a comment on the treated with courtesy, dignity, and respect. That's a two-way street, and, you know, you, you get as much courtesy as you, as you give to others. And I think, you know, this requires a lot of introspection, a lot of looking at yourself and how you, you know, express yourself, you know, because a lot of times, people behave in a way that, that triggers behavior from other people, and that triggered behavior sometimes shows up as, as a lack of respect, even though it's not meant that way. So, so, you know, we had a meeting before this, and I thought that we did a lot of really honest conversing of how we perceive each other, and I think that's something that we need to do at city council continuously as we interact with each other.
Exactly, across the board.
Right.
Across the board. Any other comments about those three areas of expectation? It is indeed a two-way street. I will interject now my views on this. Those are not debatable for any of us. We're passionate about our issues, and we take them seriously, but we need to try not to personalize our feelings. We should not try to humiliate people, to insult them, and that is true for all of us, and for me personally, because I try to model it. Those are not negotiable with me, and they shouldn't be negotiable with anybody. That's my two cents worth. What is the, oh, just treat people the way you want to be treated, right? Councilmember Robinson?
Just a comment about the fewer meetings. I totally agree with that. I feel like when you're, you know, when you're always in meetings, when you're going to do the tasks, you know. I suffer from that, and, you know, being in meetings all the time and not being able to do the work. And so, I hear that, and I feel like there's a few things that we could do to make that happen. One is set clear expectations on deadlines, when. When, when will you be able to give us X? And have that, you know, have that be reasonable, you know? If you set a deadline, let's say, well, I'll be able to give you that in ten years, then we may have a few meetings in between to figure out why you need ten years to do that. Um, and so have it be reasonable, and then give us updates, you know? Like, not have to be in person, um, but just, you know, some kind of an update if that deadline's gonna slip or change or something has arrived, so we know about it. And if you set those expectations, we can stand off the meetings, just with some good communication and some agreed-upon measurable kind of timelines, time limits, goals where we're gonna get a deliverable. Then we can, I think we can move totally to not having so many meetings. I don't want to be in all these meetings either. I'd rather be moving work.
I, uh, it, you prompted something. I tried to be careful in capturing your comments, but there is one that sticks out in my mind that I didn't put up there in terms of what the council needs from the staff. Have we gotten to that one yet? We haven't gotten, okay, because that, you triggered something in my mind. And while I'm thinking about it, I hope it's up there, because somebody said, I would appreciate a response, any kind of response. It may not be the one that I want, but I would appreciate a sentence about where this is. So, I, I, you prompted that in my mind.
Add to that, I think it's not just the council that would appreciate it, but residents.
Yes.
When they submit something, when they do something and they never hear back.
Yeah, I heard that.
It creates such chaos.
Yeah, I did hear that. Okay, uh, Mayor, you helping me? Because I've, you see while she's talking, I'm looking at the person who's speaking. Councilmember Willis.
And I could agree with the, you know, further prioritization of goals and not adding new additional goals with a small caveat, because, you know, we get elected by the residents, by the people, and there's gonna be a lot of things that get brought to our attention that are gonna have to cause us to pivot and have a little bit of fluidity. So, I do agree that we need to have some sort of blueprint, but sometimes there are just things that do come up, and we just need to be ready to act and figure out a strategy for those emergencies. And you never know what it's gonna be until a problem emerges, like smoke shops.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I agree with these. I think like for me is, um, we know, like, we work on the goals and no more additional goals, but we are elected as city council, and sometimes the community has some issues that we need to bring. So, I don't think it's just, uh, I think like having both ways of like, um, no, no having goals, but we are having all these goals that we need to see, get accomplished. And it's not going to happen where a city council is here and is not going to bring more other things, because it, it, then it won't be responding to the community's needs. So, I think it needs to be a balance where, uh, we can see the deliverables for the goals that were there before. So, we can show to the community, actually, we are doing that, and, and then we can say, let's weigh a little bit for others. But if the community is not seeing anything, and then we are not putting in goals, then it's going to be, be, be difficult. So, one other thing is also that, uh, if people are overworked because there is too many things, we need to address it by hiring more, more staff and getting to, and I know that is a, is a balance in terms of like how much, like what we can pay or not, but having that conversation about what really, uh, departments, uh, like public works needs, like the poor needs to advance then, uh, needs to happen. Because it's not, I, I don't think it's the conversation I know about, about additional goals. I don't, I don't think like any city council is going to stop doing, that is, is that magic is not going to happen here. But I think like the, the reality is how we are going to, um, deliver some of them, what is the plan for delivering, and, uh, and, and then be honest about what is the real need, uh, so we can start making decisions about the budget and the allocation of resources for, uh, staffing in different areas where the goals that we are asking should be done. Thank you.
And I think you're going to see that, I should have the staff respond, but my understanding is you're going to see that in the upcoming budget presentations, because one of the things that we did add to that matrix when you established those goals is what additional resources, if any, are needed. And we said, some of them, we don't need additional resources, we just need more time. And some of them, we said, we do need additional resources, and it's gonna cost money if we're gonna do it. But I think you're gonna see that, um, as the staff prepares the draft budgets, that will be coming before you soon. Any other comments about these five? If not, let's move to the next.
Excuse me, I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor.
Speak to fewer meetings so staff can focus on implementation of the goals and objectives.
Yes.
Um, I've had many conversations with staff, and, uh, last year, at Christmas time, we, we gave time. And my only caveat was that, uh, the meetings that we do not have, uh, should not impact the business of the city. So, so, uh, you know, because there's, there's things, you know, that have timelines that require the council to, to, to opine on or to pass. And so I just wanted to make sure that when we had fewer meetings, that the lack, that the meetings did not interfere with city business. Uh, we're also, we've also just put on the, uh, calendar of the month of, uh, July as, as being, uh, no meetings. Well, we have one meeting in July, but, but generally, we would meet to, all the way, all the way up to August. So, so that is something that the council has been working on to, to meet the needs of, of staff. And I see that.
Thank you for that comment. Yes, Councilmember Robinson.
My, my understanding when I was speaking to that issue was not the city council meetings, but rather the individual meetings that we have with staff members. Um, and, you know, there's a lot of those, and I can understand how, you know, if you're having individual meetings with multiple council members on multiple topics, then when is it that you do your work, you know? Like, that, that is the thing that I feel like I would be happy to be a part of reducing those. And my request was, let's set reasonable deadlines and then give updates in some kind of short, non-meeting form, if, if those deadlines need to shift or something arises that you need to make people aware of.
Communications.
Good point.
Timely communications.
Thank you.
Not necessarily an in-person meeting, is what Councilmember, I, I hope I'm not mischaracterizing what you said. I said, what I heard you say was timely communications, and they need not necessarily be in person.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, the next slide, because we've got, I think, fifteen of these. Again, what the management staff needs from the council. Agreement on priorities and need space to focus on priorities. Commit to the priorities. Outline their role as liaison. Uh, I may need some clarification on that. Understand that we are a team, work together towards goals. We need to establish trust, and that is 360-degree trust issue. And to be objective. Questions, comments? And if I can't translate what I heard, I'll ask the staff to speak to it. The issue of the priorities keeps coming back, and I see that in various forums. And I think what I heard from the staff is the frustration that we went through a very exhaustive process in establishing the goals and objectives, and the staff is feeling overwhelmed with requests for certain things that require more than just a quick response or a three-page memo, but it's going to require some really concentrated effort. And which then raises the question, should that become one of your established priorities, especially if they get to many of those? Or do we need to redo something with the priorities? So, something gets moved off that list or drops down further on the list. And I think there's recognition that things come up. The organization is not static, the community is not static. Issues are going to arise that are going to require more than having analysts prepare a three-page report. And so maybe what we need to be thinking about at some point, and that will become on staff, to say to the council that we have now these three pending requests, uh, and they're coming from individuals, they're coming from the whole council. They're going to require considerable concentration of resources, and it's not realistic for us to commit that we could do that and stay on top of those that you've already established. And so we need to do some refining of that. But I think that's what's behind that, that comment. To be sensitive to the fact that if you're making a request that requires dedicated, concentrated resources, that becomes a priority, and it may not be on that list that you established. Because I've said it before, they, and you recognize it, you've acknowledged it, and you compliment the staff, you're sensitive to it. It takes a lot to just keep the train running without those priorities. And their job is to make sure the train doesn't jump the tracks. Okay? All right. If there are no comments about that, or clarification needs, Councilmember Cepeda.
On, on the word trust, uh, thank you for putting that there in the capitals as well. I remember that when I was first elected in the first couple of meetings, as we were getting started, at least for myself, uh, that, that was a word that the community used a lot. And they were comparing the current council and the current staff. I know we have a lot of new staff members, uh, but a lot of the community felt like they did not trust the city as a whole, not pointing fingers at any particular person or people. But we had to rebuild that. So, we, as, as council members, have to establish that on the ground and then bring it forward. So, it's, we have to be able to work together with, and, and that word there, because we have to get back to our constituents and saying, hey, trust me that we're gonna patch that pothole. But if that pothole takes ten years to do, the trust just gotta erode it, right? Or if it takes too long, or if they ask for an update, and we say, oh, they're coming, and they're, we're coming, we are working on it, we are working on it. There's only so much, and I'm only using potholes, sorry, Daniel, I'm only using that as a bad example, right? We're only, we're looking to do this thing, right? Whatever that thing may be, it might, it might not always be a pothole. But if, if we keep coming back to it, and we say, we're working on it, and a perfect example is the little kid that came to us, you mentioned the stop sign, right? He's like, why can't you just put up the stop sign, right? To, to our constituents, and, and me, myself included, right? It's so easy to just fix it, right? That's just the mindset that we all have. Why can't you just fix it? It's gonna take you ten minutes to patch that pothole. They don't know everything else, so we have to build that trust with the community and allow them to understand how something gets done, but making sure that we get back to them on a timely basis, so they know that we're working on it. And I think that's kind of the theme, and, and Councilmember Robinson was mentioning that as well. We have to get back to our constituents. Otherwise, I know that I have, otherwise I have to call for a meeting. And after calling for a meeting, it's not that I don't trust the staff. I know staff is working in it, but there's only so much that I can say to the constituents before they no longer trust me to say that I am helping bring something along. So, we gotta work together so that the constituents can help, uh, find that trust in us, all of us, together again.
Well said. Councilmember Robinson.
Um, I really wanna kind of push that point. I think it's a really excellent point, that maybe even staff could help understand us, you know? Because when we're out in community, people will bring these things to us, and they'll see us over and over again, and if we keep promising them, it's a coming, it's a coming. Um, yeah, like you said, you won't trust us. And I, I kinda wanna, and the reason why I'm talking is not to repeat what you said, but also to just push that point, that, that kid who wants the stop sign, he's growing older now, like many years since he first requested that stop sign. And so what is reasonable for that child to wait for that stop sign? You know, what is reasonable? I mean, is he eighteen by the time he gets that stop sign? Is that reasonable? Is that reasonable for a city resident to wait for an improvement that they see as, and they're experiencing as a safety concern? And I, I feel like that's the point that I really wanna push, is that, yes, we, I, I am on board with slowing down people's expectations and having them see a bigger picture of all the things that are on the plate, but then it has to be within what's reasonable. Because he shouldn't have to wait till he's eighteen to get that stop sign.
And a question is, in my mind, is, have we done an analysis to determine whether or not a stop sign is warranted? Um, I don't know, and that's rhetorical, I'm not asking the public works directly to respond to that.
That is, that is a part of the response, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Because he hasn't heard whether or not we have, whether or not it's warranted, or, he hasn't heard anything. He's just getting older.
Sure.
You know, asking for the same, same thing.
Well, Councilmember McLaughlin has a comment.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
And I think I know part of what it's going to be.
Um, I don't know if you do, but I will share it.
Well, she's, she's raised, it wasn't a stop sign, but it, I think about it all the time, and I think, oh my, we've got to fix this.
I don't remember what it was, but.
I'll remind you privately.
Okay, okay. Um, one thing that.
I want to start a whole number of discussion around that.
Okay. One thing that I have found in regard to, uh, reaching out to staff is that if, to know what their specialty is, like within a department, for example, for a pothole or for some cleanup of a park, operations and maintenance, I reach out to Tofik, and he, he responds, you know? And sometimes he, like in the last time I reached out, he said, um, you could tell your constituent, if it's not done within a week, to reach back to me. And so they actually did reach back, but they reached back to me, and then I reached back to Tofik. Now, he was off yesterday, so hopefully he'll, he'll be responding soon. But I think knowing who, you know, like, for certain things, like local road safety or traffic calming or something, I would reach out to Robert, you know? But knowing who to reach out to is also important, and some of these things should be quick, yeah, like a pothole, or, um, I forgot, this, this was a cleanup and maybe some light, lights were out. And I think, um, you know, those are more quick things than to do a redesign of a street or something, but at least get a response. And I think, I think, um, I've been finding that that has been forthcoming from staff in general, more.
I'm gonna step out of my role. Uh, I commended you for your police safety. As I drive around the city of Richmond, though, I've seen more than one pothole. So, uh, that, to fix that pothole may not be next week, because there are hundreds of those potholes, hundreds of them. I've driven across, not as bad as Oakland. I want the record to show that. You are nowhere near as bad as Oakland, but you have more than two. Okay, all right. Other comments? Oakland has craters. There are no potholes. Don't turn the, oh, is this being recorded? There are no potholes in Oakland. These are craters. I'll tell you, you drive your car on any of those streets, and you're headed to the repair shop. Okay, next one. So, let's see. Contacts with consultants is counterproductive. Eliminate we versus they dichotomy. This next one did not come, I want the record to show. The city manager did not put this up here, but it came from the MLT. Respect the city manager privately and in public. Update council rules to have July and August off. Limit presentations to one, two per meeting. Adding items to agenda unless it relates to the goals, unless mayor and a couple of the councilmembers agree to it. Do you need further clarification on any of those? And I'll have to turn to the staff for some of them, because I'm not sure what's intended by some of those comments. But I wrote down what they said. Now, the mayor made a reference to July and August, but I don't think you've adopted that on a permanent basis, have you? Did you say?
Not a, not a permanent basis, but for this year.
Right, but you're considering it. It's being considered.
One, one thing, Mr. Mayor, I know you mentioned that it was on the council agenda, but it, it wasn't. I mean, I'm not saying I disagree with it, I'm just saying, I look back and it wa- I mean, I'm not saying I disagree with it, I'm just saying, I look back, and the only thing on the council agenda was something about, I think, this meeting, having a special meeting for this. But I didn't see it there. Maybe, the clerk seems to have some...
Is this about July?
About the July, yeah, yeah.
The recess for the council is on the May 7th agenda?
Oh, it's future agenda, so future.
I was just too eager.
You were just what?
Too eager.
Any comments on any of these slides? Councilmember Zapata and Councilmember Willis.
I'll let them go first, and then I'll go after.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the main, I get it, I definitely get it operationally. I think the main slide I disagree with is the last one, the adding items to the agenda unless it relates to the goals, which I do agree with that. But the unless mayor plus two councilmembers agree. Right now, we have a pretty chill council where there's a good rapport, but that dynamic changes every two years, and politics is something that gets very personal and very strategic. And I wouldn't want to agree to anything like that, because I don't feel like everybody's going to, I don't know. It could be abused in some ways that I wouldn't want to subject the council to, so that's why I would push back against that. Though, I mean, I do want to acknowledge that, yeah, focusing on that implementation, making sure the goals that we did set are being pushed forward, but also it goes back to that, making sure we're having fluidity with what we're getting as councilmembers, is being representative of different districts with our constituencies, as well, also as representatives of the entire city of Richmond. So that one becomes hard for me.
Councilmember Zapata?
I was going to say the same thing about the meetings as well. And also, it can't be mayor plus two councilmembers, because then that's violation of Brown Act, unless the two is already whoever's bringing it forward. But that's just Brown Act stuff. But yeah, I agree with that as well.
Because you're counting four, because you're counting the councilmember?
I'm counting three. Three, that's three plus one is four.
But you're saying the advocate for the position plus these three?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if that's plus two others, or is that plus two equals that other? But I also, but I also agree with Councilmember Willis, because our constituents are asking us for items, and they might or may, or they may or may not always align with the goals. It's something that has to do with the individual district. And I know that we want to look at the whole city, right? But it's our constituents that elect us, and we are on the street with them, looking at the issues. And we want to make sure that they are heard. When they say, look at this issue, we want to bring it forward, and maybe we do the goals, we did the goals last year, right? So if some new issue comes up, we have to be able to bring it up. And that's the only way that we sometimes have, to be able to get something done.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear to staff that it's not, the mayor doesn't have to be, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm happy when I'm on an item with the mayor, a co-sponsor, he's a co-sponsor on one of my items. But it doesn't always have to include a mayor. Three councilmembers, maybe myself, Councilmember Robinson, and Councilmember Jimenez, or three others, might want to put something on the agenda. I could see, you know, I, and I also see that sometimes it's just one or two councilmembers that have this desire. They think that the council as a whole will buy into it. But I, I think that's setting something up, like, and I don't think the mayor should have to have that level of responsibility, that he has to be involved with every single item that, you know, some of us on the council want to put forward. I mean, that's not how, how it works, you know, in the type of style of council with the mayor, that we, the kind of mayor-council style of governance that we have.
I think Councilmember Jimenez had her hand up, and then she took it down when Councilwoman McLaughlin started speaking.
Yeah, I just...
And then the mayor, and then Councilmember Robinson.
I agree with the July and August as a matter, with the kids, whose school is starting June, I totally agree. So, thank you. I, I just wanted to say, like, the, we are elected here to make policies, and the way that we do it is by bringing it to the city council. And if it gets approved, then it's a direction to the council. So I think, like, these, I, I feel that these bugs here is an intent to take that power away from the city council, and I don't agree with that. I, if, like, I feel like this go back to the same issue about a council bringing a lot of items, and staff feeling overwhelmed by having to get all these items and not be focused. So I agree in terms of, like, well, we spend a lot of time in some goals, and we all agree on the goals. I think we, we should try as hard as we can that these items are related to moving these goals that we agree on. But at the same time, if the issue is about staff not have the capacity, then we have to have a conversation about what is the capacity that is needed, right? And, and get the staff so we can move, the staff can move the items related to. So I, I just feel like, we cannot have it both ways. We cannot just say, oh, don't, don't bring items, but at the same time, don't, don't just kind of like have the minimum staffing for the services, because I just feel like the way that we serve the community is by having the staff that we need. Like, the library doesn't open by itself, the park doesn't get cleaned by itself, and the finance of the poor doesn't done by, by nobody but a finance manager. So I just feel like it's, it's just, we had to have that discussion, because I don't think, just by saying, don't add more items, again, I said last time, it's not like we are not going to bring items to the, the, the agenda, because we, we are bringing items to the agenda in some ways, in response to the community needs in or on districts and as a city as a whole.
Councilmember Bono?
Let me ask you a question, I'm not clear. Are we talking about, we're talking about ending any agenda items, because I can imagine a whole bunch of agenda items that are not related to your goals and priorities. And you may have a compelling reason to want to bring those to the council for some action. So are we talking about any agenda items that do not relate to the goals and objectives? Because I can think of several that wouldn't relate to the goals and objectives, but they don't require extraordinary work for you to act on, perhaps? And then I go back to a comment I made earlier. The city is not a static community. I mean, things are happening all the time. I'm talking about, remember that I did these interviews several months ago, and as you've acknowledged, a lot has happened. We did the goals even longer ago than that. And something is likely to emerge that does not speak to your goals and objectives, but you may want the whole council to weigh in on that. And it may, you know, we may ask the question, well, that's going to require a lot of heavy lifting, what is it, are we going to either take off of the goals, or we're going to drop lower on the priority list? So I'm just not clear about what we're talking about advancing to the council. Certainly, we're not talking about any agenda items that may not be related to the goals and objectives, because they may require very little. They may require you to take a policy position on something, and you do it, and it's done. So are you clear? If you're clear, it's okay, but I'm not clear. What is your thinking about that?
Councilmember Bono?
Thank you. I would like to follow up on what Vice Mayor Jimenez was saying about the need for resources if an item demands it. Specific example, recently, I suggested an item along with two other councilmembers, and the city manager disagreed and said, we don't have the resources for it, it may require more resources. And then it may bring up some disagreement among the city councilmembers and the staff. I mean, this is when, I believe, the city manager oversteps the limit and dictates to the city council what they should or should not do. We are here to set policies. If there is disagreement, let it be. I mean, we are representing people of the city, we should be able to harmoniously collaborate, discuss issue items, debate, and come up into an agreement. If it requires resources, let it be, we decide whether we can afford the resources or not. I don't think it's the role of the city manager to tell the city council, do not bring this item.
But that's not what this says. This, as if I'm reading it correctly, actually, it's not the city manager who's doing it.
They want us not to bring items to the agenda.
The mayor and two, oh, so you're, you're reading this, that unless the city manager recommends it, the mayor and the two councilmembers never get to meet?
A point, a point of clarification. This is under what does the management leadership team need from the city council?
Right.
So, so the way she's reading it is that this is something management would like for the city council to do. So, so, so the city council is asking this of us.
No, it's the management, the management leadership.
Well, the management leadership team, I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
Right, thank you. Well, but it gets back to the fundamental question. And you don't need to resolve it now, but we need to have full discussion about it. So at least we understand what the issue is.
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, I mean, I just was going to say, like, we don't necessarily have to agree with the recommendation. The only thing that I would just ask is just kind of like, look at where it's coming from, and I do think it has come from a capacity issue, and it's just kind of like acknowledging, like, whenever we do add something to the agenda that is going to take away from something else, just for preparation and research. It's not, I mean, you know, if it's an important issue, it's an important issue, but at least considering, like, how that impacts the overall workflow week after week, at minimum, and, you know, let's just keep it in the back of our heads and figure out if there is a collective strategy, at least with this current council, that we can, you know, work through that. But I at least just want to, you know, not take away from where that's coming from, it's just coming from capacity and stress and wanting to accomplish deadline and goals, too. That's all.
I think that's right. I think that's right. And I think it's really agenda items that require resources. It's not, obviously not a congrat...
All of it, all of it requires various research.
It's not asking for a resolution to apply for a grant.
Yeah, I would like to speak to the adding items to agenda unless it relates to the goals, unless mayor plus two city ma, two councilmembers, yeah.
Right.
I agree with Councilmember McLaughlin on having the mayor being one of the voices. I think that it puts a lot of power into the mayor's hand. For instance, if I was less gracious and more centered on my values, if the city council members decided to bring something forward that was, that I was opposed to, I could, I could just nip it in the bud. And the, and the community would not be able to, to, to hear the concerns of the council members, or, or there might be items that comes from the community, and then I, as a mayor, would just, you know, make sure that I didn't make it to, to, to the council. So, so I don't think any one member should have that power.
Would it be helpful to talk about, for a few minutes? What process works best for you? I mean, obviously, you want, I, what I'm hearing is you want to preserve the right and opportunity for a councilmember to advance an item on the agenda, and you can vote it up or down, but not restrict their ability to do that. And the other is, and I don't know, the city manager can speak for herself, you put an item on the agenda, and we find that it's constraining, we tell you that you're now putting us on true overload, and so I'm back to my other comment, what do you want to take off this list? But what is going to work best for you that gives you the opportunity to advance your items, and then the council can vote them up or down?
I, I hear this around what you were saying around capacity and being overloaded and whatnot, and trying to control the length of agendas so we're not there all night. And I would much prefer that councilmembers brought projects that are going to commit city resources to the agenda, so we can all hear it and all vote on it, rather than go kind of behind the scenes to get people to do things without having consensus or without having a vote. So I, I, like others, disagree with the, having the mayor be a gatekeeper in that process.
And it's not, it's not about this mayor, it's not any mayor.
No, it's not about that mayor, it's about any mayor, being able to have that kind of power. It's, that is dysfunctional. You don't want to do that. Like, that's going to, that's, that's painful. I had my hand up a while back for a different thing. I'll put it down now, because we're talking about this issue, but I want to, I want to talk about another one of the issues up there, when we're ready.
But you're going to make a note, so you're going to remember, but don't let me forget. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Thank you.
Your honor.
Thank you. I feel like the, like, you, you asked for the process, but the process is already there. Like, the way that we direct staff to do things is by four votes of the city council. And I agree with, and I feel like what it could be that is, I, I understand that there are things that happen. For instance, like, one city council is working with one staff to bring something in the, to the front front, because there is a need in the community. And before going to the, the full city council, it needs a little bit of, like, it needs some work. And since we don't have a staff, we rely on the city staff.
Sure.
But there is kind of like, an issue there as well, because, like, and I, I want to kind of like ask to think about that, because sometimes we have some issues, we want to bring it up, but we don't feel it's ready until we have some advice and some work in the staff. But how big, like, but sometimes these ideas become so big that it starts requiring so much time of the staff, and if there is no clear city council direction, then it gets a little complicated, complicating issue for the staff. So that is the thing that I, I want, like, that I want to, to look into. Because it's, like, the process is, like, for us, the process is, we bring items to the city council, if we have the votes, it passes, and then it's a clear direction to the staff, and the city manager has to work on how to implement, accomplish, right? That is, but then there is the, the bad part where it gets a little complicating. So that is the part that I, and I don't have the answer yet.
Councilmember Zapata, then Mr. Mayor, and then back to Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. Something that, that I've been working on, and it's been working for me, it's a little bit more time-consuming, but I think it works. I try to reach out to the city manager first and kind of pitch my crazy ideas or other ideas that community might have, right? I pitch it over. And then I, depending on what the item is, making sure that legal looks at it, I try to get everything set up for me prior to bringing it forward. Working with other staff members, as the city manager might direct, say, you should talk to so-and-so, or making sure that somebody looked at it before I bring it forward. So whatever I bring forward, and then I try to work on my, with my colleagues if I can...
At the council meeting?
Yes, well, prior to, see if I can get a cosigner, and if not, then I bring it forward to the city council for a vote there. But that kind of works, and that way I know that I've brought an item forward that has been reviewed and checked, and that it's good to go. Because I've noticed... been reviewed and checked, and that it's good to go, 'cause I've noticed in prior years, sometimes items will make it onto the agenda, and it's like, ooh, that everybody look at that. So, that's just a little more time-consuming, but it works for me. So, just putting it out there as the process there.
Mr. Mayor, and then Councilmember Robinson.
I think we have an issue of process here. A lot of times, doing things the way that councilmember Sepeda said, staff ends up doing a lot of work without council direction. So, there is the issue of staff doing work without council direction, which may not even be voted on. So, to me, it needs to be the other way around. A council member needs to do whatever it is to flesh out the idea with the direction to direct staff to flesh it out. And if the council thinks that it's an important thing, then the staff is directed to do the work that they otherwise would have been doing without council direction. I also want to say that this item came up because we, there were council members who didn't understand the process of setting agenda items. And so, and so, a lot of agenda items started stacking up without, well, you know, without the understanding that there's seven council members, and that seven council members, you know, if seven council members put in four items each, you know, then, then, you know, there's seven times four, twenty-eight.
It's a lot.
Yeah. So, I believe that council members have had the ability to see how the council works and to see the capacity of not only staff, but the capacity of council meetings. I mean, we've found that generally, we can only do two items, because so much conversation takes place, you know? So, if council members put four or five things on, you know, then, then we start getting backlog. I think we also need to consider which items can be consent, you know, which would not impact council time. It would impact staff, but, but, you know, a lot, I mean, for instance, my office, you know, does a lot of resolutions, does, does a lot of commendations, and so, and then appointments, you know? So, those are all consent calendar items, so, you know? And the council also, you know, has those sorts of items which go on the consent calendar. So, I think it would just be extra work for everyone to have to lobby other people for something that, you know, would simply go on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Robinson.
Not yet. Oh, okay. So, let me ask you. The issues come up in other kinds of ways. So, a council member has four agenda item requests. Do we say we cannot accommodate four agenda items in any one meeting? We can't accommodate them in the next six weeks meetings? Can you prioritize which is the most important for you, and let's put that one on first? Do we have a process that, since I've got four, do any of mine ever get on the agenda? What is that process?
Yeah. And I think that process is one that each council member needs to internalize. You know, if they have four agenda items, they need to ask themselves, okay, I have four agenda items, which one of these is more important? And then put that one forward.
All right. Okay. There's some clarity about that. Any other comments on any of these slides? We're gonna push on. What do we have next? Clarification on council requests, clear communication process, open to various perspectives, no gotcha moments, staff answers council questions prior to council meetings, however, those questions are reiterated at the meeting. Questions or comments regarding these? And I can speak, well, I shouldn't, but I'm going to speak to the last one. Any questions or comments about those?
Councilmember Bono.
Thank you. I would like to know what clear communication process is.
Clear communication process? For me, that means to be as clear as we can in what it is that we're communicating. No vagueness to, you need to be direct, and respectful always, but try to be direct. And the mayor used the term earlier, and I would use it here in a different context, is to be concise in your communications. But be clear and be direct, and try to be concise, and always ask the question, is there, is there any misunderstanding or ambiguity about what I'm requesting, what I'm communicating, what I'm asking for? It's a practice that I use. I'm not recommending this one, because this one could get you into real trouble. When I'm agitated, I can be very direct, and there can be no misunderstanding about what I'm communicating, but I'm not advocating that. Don't get to that point. Let's be respectful, but try to, you know, be as clear and concise as you can. And I think somebody said this, somebody said it up there, is that we also try to listen and understand what the other person is communicating, so that there is clarity with that communication, and not leave with any confusion. And do that check-in, that, you know, is what I'm asking for, is what I've said, is it clear? Do you need more from me? I think that's what that speaks to. Any other comments about any of this? Councilmembers Sepeda.
I mean, thank you. On the last item there, I do that. I ask staff questions, and both educate you for me to make sure that I'm prepared and ready for the meeting, and I also wanna give them a heads-up of what my questions might be, so I don't just go, surprise, here's no question, and they're not prepared to answer. Then I ask it again sometimes, because now I know the answer, but I wanna make sure that both my colleagues and the constituents know the answer. Otherwise, if we just ask all the questions over email, I mean, the meetings will go much faster, 'cause we'll never speak, but the constituency might never get the answer either.
That's...
So, it's gotta be a little bit of both. Maybe not every question, but a little bit of both.
Precisely the comment I was going to make, because for me personally, and I don't know what was behind that comment, I appreciate you asking me, it's okay if the question didn't occur to you until you got into the council chamber, but I appreciate you asking me the question before I get into council. And then I have thought about the answer, I've given you the answer, and I understand why you're asking that same question. It's exactly what you said. You are demonstrating to your constituents and to your colleagues, you asked a question, and they're hearing the answer now from the staff, not that you're just repeating what the staff told you, which also gives them a chance to ask the staff other questions about the issue. So, I don't know what was behind that, or what, where the confusion comes from, but that gets to the gotcha moments. The way you get around the gotcha moments is, ask me before I go into, so I can deal with gotcha moments. If it makes me mad enough, I'll give them right back to you. But I prefer not to have those. And what you just suggested eliminates that. You aren't surprising me, holding the question, and then I've had no chance to think about it. I've told you to answer, and so I know when you ask it, I'm not sitting there saying, well, what the hell is this? I've already told them the answer. I understand exactly why you're asking it again. And I think there should be better communication with staff about why you're doing that and how that process works. But I much prefer you asking me before I go in that chamber, than when I get in there and I think, where the hell did this come from?
And I've also noticed that when we ask, sometimes in advance, some agenda items get either moved around or get pulled, because staff may need more time. Maybe there was something there that, oh, that one, we didn't check. Maybe legal didn't get a chance to review it, I'm not throwing legal under the bus here, or some other department, because sometimes it's legal needs to review, make sure the language is correct. So, maybe they didn't get that opportunity, 'cause the agenda item moved too quickly, and then it gets pulled back just to make sure that it's correct. So, I have seen that as well. So, hopefully, it's helpful. Thank you.
And that all goes to the communications process, too, that we understand why we're communicating that way, and how actually, in my judgment, it's effective for everybody if we know in advance, to the extent that we can. Things will occur to you on the floor of the chamber, and you're absolutely entitled to ask the question. But then it's clear, this isn't a gotcha moment, it was the dynamics of the discussion and whatever happened that prompted you to think of something else, and my answer is, sometimes I do not know the answer, but when we come back, I will know it, and you will know it, too. Councilmember Robinson.
So, just a quick kind of comment. I feel like what would be helpful, I know it's in the next section, but just to always be remembering for staff, for management leadership, the role that we have in terms of public process and accountability to our constituency. So, you know, I spend many, many hours trying to read as much as possible of all these agendas and all the attachments and everything. Very few residents are doing that.
They can't.
They're not reading the answers to these questions. They're not reading, but if they are even listening to the city council, which is also rare, if you take the whole city into consideration, they will listen to what we say. And so, this process of maybe repeating things, as councilmember Sepeda had said, is about public process, about making public the answers to these questions, so that people at least hear it, 'cause most probably, they won't read it. Very few people are reading these packages.
It's a challenge for you to read them. They weren't elected to the council. Vice Mayor.
I wasn't here, but I wanted to comment on that. I think, like, sometimes I feel like it will be a good process to bring these questions to the staff before the meeting, so they also have a moment to prepare when we are asking these questions to the public. Because at the end of the day, for myself, I don't ask these to be answered just for myself. I think, like, we need, like, and we need these questions to be answered, so the public know what is going on. And I think, like, I feel like out of courtesy, it will be good to kinda like, write this question and send it to staff, so they can be prepared and they don't feel like we are just kinda like putting them in the hat, shared, in the spot all the time. But at the same time, there will be other questions that we will have, because the conversation that we are having.
That's what I said.
So, I just, I just feel like, I ask a lot of questions, and sometimes I want them to know that I am going to ask these questions. They can answer, like, so we know, we are both prepared for the council meeting.
And when the questions are asked respectfully, I think they'll be received and should be received, in the same spirit. But in my judgment, everybody is better served if we can improve the communication and have the question or the conversation ahead of time. I think it serves all of our purposes. I think, but I'm not part of the MLTV. People say, who invited him to facilitate this? I should let him speak for himself. Any other comments about anything else up here?
We're ready to move.
Okay. If none, next slide. MLT needs you to assume that staff is doing the best that they can, that they're dancing as fast as they can, and they are totally committed to the city and to this community. Review what is a conflict of interest and ethics. More understanding, think about how the items will affect staff and the community. Same schedule of staff or council items, in terms of when you get your stuff in. Make sure agenda items are in line with the goals. Again, we've talked about that, but we're not talking about the usual and customary stuff that normally flows. We're talking about big subject items that might require additional resources and may require an adjustment in your goals and objectives. A better understanding of what a policy resolution and law are, and why implementation is so Questions or comments about those?
Just for a point of clarification, some of these were not on the original list. Can you tell me which ones they are?
I hope I didn't give two sets of comments that are not, one wasn't completed. What was not on, what did you get originally?
Well, let's see. I have...
Oh, is it on another slide? Is it one, do we have another slide? Or is this it? This is it? This is the last one? There's one more? So, we do have another slide? Okay. So, let's see now. You said something, though, is up there that wasn't? Let's go back to that one. There's something that...
All right. Let's see. I have a better understanding. That's here. I have make sure agenda items are with goals. I do not see, let's see, let's see, same schedule of staff for council members?
The next set of slides is what topic?
Yeah, that's there. Okay. Review of what is conflict of interest.
Yes.
Is that on here?
Okay. That's right. Okay. Now, you're still on what the MLT needs from the council, right?
Yeah. Uh-huh. Yeah. This is management...
And you think something got added here that's not on your paper copy? I don't know how that happened. I hope I didn't do it.
Let's see more. Okay, that's there.
But I could have.
Okay. So, there's one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five. So, I guess it's review of what is conflict of interest and ethics. So, that's, that's not on here, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure that...
Okay. Well, if you've flagged something, let me know. And I may have created the confusion, given the time period when I put this together.
It is a review of what is a conflict of interest and ethics. That was not on the original.
That was not on the original? But I'm probably responsible for that. I will take responsibility for it, because as I said, this was, I put this together in the winter, and we put this together last week, and I may have confused the staff when I transmitted that. Councilmember Mottbaff.
Yeah. I don't think that same schedule of staff for council items is a good policy, because staff sometimes has to get things on the items on the agenda, or get it in the queue for the agenda, three weeks before, a month before. I don't exactly know what staff's schedule is, but it's longer than, council members have to just get an item on by noon on Wednesday before the following meeting. And the reason that came up was because sometimes at council meetings, something comes up, you know? The public asks, you know, for something, and, you know, we hustle to get an agenda report created for the next meeting. And so, I think, and, you know, we don't, staff has a whole department, you know? And I love the fact that staff does interdepartmental teamwork. I wanna give that compliment, that I think our city manager has done a great job with bringing departments together for addressing various policies and goals of the council. But, and, you know, usually, there's a lead person or a lead department that will work on an agenda, but with input from other staff members. But for us, you know, for the council, I mean, I know the mayor's office has staff, and they work for... and they work for him, rightly so. But we don't have full-time staff to help us work through, you know, to get something on early enough. I mean, I write all my own agenda reports, and I try and get it well before that Wednesday at noon, but I like to have that option, so maybe I need to tweak something and get it on by noon. And that is, that is what it's been for a while, and I think that works.
Can we have staff respond to that? Because as I read it, I'm not sure what the intent is. Who can clarify? Same schedule of staff or council agenda items, what does that mean? That it, well, just explain, somebody explain what does that mean? What does that comment mean?
Okay. Well, I can take a pass at trying to, so I know that there's, well, I think for me, from the city attorney's office perspective, we've run into a situation where we have multiple council items that are coming in, you know, the Wednesday right at noon, that require a little bit more legal analysis and review. And so from, you know, from our office's perspective, we would like to push that date back so that there's more time for review. Obviously, if it's like a mayor's item for an appointment to a council, then that's, that's a different, you know, that's a different situation. But if it's something that requires, you know, that does require some thoughtful legal analysis, I think that the, you know, the best practice would be we have some more time to work with it. And then in terms of scheduling, I think, you know, we have specific targets through our escribe system, you know, for deadlines, that it goes through, you know, the, anyway, specific queues that it goes through. If that's, I don't know, Shawso, if that's the schedule. I don't know what exactly those, I don't, I don't actually know exactly what those timelines are, but maybe Pam can speak to that.
I think the staff has two weeks to get an item through workflow, which gives the finance department, then it goes to the legal department, then it goes to the city manager's office, then it comes to the city clerk's office. So it gives it a couple of weeks to get through the process so everybody can review the item for efficiency.
So to be succinct, are we saying that we need from the council their items two weeks in advance, three weeks in advance? What are we saying? What does all of that mean? Maybe it's clear to the seven of you, it is not clear to me. How much, how much notice do we need? It certainly sounds like it's more than four days. And again, Ms. Moore has been real clear that she's not talking about items, congratulatory items, proclamations, things like that. She's talking about items where, for her office, they need adequate time to review the legal aspects of what's being proposed. So having said all of that, which you said succinctly, is it two weeks? When do we need their items?
If we're gonna go with their schedule, it's two weeks.
It's two weeks? It took us a long time to get there, but we got there, didn't we? You needed to get your stuff in two weeks before the meeting. Councilmember Willis, I should, you know, I'm having too much fun. This is, it's just not fair. This is absolutely not fair. Councilmember Willis.
Or Councilmember McLaughlin, where you done? I heard you say...
Well, I just was gonna say, this has been something that staff has requested that we get it in as soon as possible, and I think many of us have adhered to that, you know, like, we often, if we're working with a community group, which I think is a really, really important thing, and I would ask staff to respect the fact that we, and I often see resistance on that level, but sometimes a community group is doing a lot of work on an item that staff could benefit, you know, would be less work for staff. But back to the schedule, I think staff makes a good point, they want more time, and they have asked us for it. So I know if I'm working with a community group or something, I say, hey, listen, if you have some input on this for me as I'm coming up with this agenda report, please get it to me, you know, by Monday, so I can work on it, or by Fri, I'll often say by Friday, so I could work on it and get it to staff earlier than the Wednesday noon deadline. So I, I do agree that that's important, to give them enough time, but the two weeks, to me, seems not really reasonable, since we often are getting urgent issues that come to our attention in a very time-sensitive way. I do understand legal has to review them, and I'm happy to always, you know, make sure I get them in, in plenty of time. And I would say a Monday, you know, I don't know what the council thinks, but I just think two weeks is a bit long.
Henry, after...
Can we agree that, oh, I'm sorry?
Henry, after Councilmember McLaughlin goes, I mean, Councilmember Willis goes, can Shiva copine since Trina's not here because she does agenda review with us?
I can say something about Trina, because I know Trina needs time, and that's why I write all my own agenda reports, and that's why I get them to her as early as possible. Some council members just say, hey, write up a, I mean, I don't know if they still do, but in the past, they've said, hey, write up an agenda report for me on this. And poor Trina and her staff have to work on that. But I understand, we don't want to overload Trina. She has six of us that she has to work on. I just think that, I don't know, I don't know what the other council members think, so I'll listen.
Councilmember Jimenez. I didn't mean to cut you off. You need to call me on that.
Yeah.
I'm, I rely on the mayor to keep the order, and when he doesn't direct me, I call on the person I see. Vice Mayor. Who's talking? This, this is a stage.
Yes.
And I am the performer.
And I am entertained.
So I wander all around. Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, my comments on that, the two things, and I'll try to be very succinct. I know when I first started as city council, that was something I talked about with staff, is just saying, hey, can you at least give us two weeks, because we want to make sure there, everything's on the up and up, and that there isn't any adjustments that needs to be made. Otherwise, you put it on the agenda, and then a lot of times, it's like, staff, what do you think about this? And it's like, well, we haven't had a chance to talk about it. It just showed up on the agenda. We haven't done any type of thing, so it kind of puts them on the spot to know the answers when there hasn't been research done on that. So in that case, I, my, you know, preliminary suggestion doesn't have to be codified at this moment, but just saying, like, if there isn't that research done, then at least put it on the agenda, like, as a direction to staff to come back with something, just so the work keeps getting moving on it. And one example I'd like to point out on that is, I'm not gonna name any names, but there was a decision that happened a few years back, whenever we were trying to look for a safe parking for Castro residents in the North Richmond area, and the mayor at the time put on the agenda that we need to use that vacant lot there that was owned by the city, appropriate like $1 million of ARPA fund to retrofit and just move everybody over there. And nobody was able to do the real analysis on it, and even after we gave that direction, that got reversed later on, they came back and says, it's gonna cost a lot more than $1 million to make that what it is, and there's additional things that are done that council needs to talk about. So because that analysis didn't get in, it was just kind of like, here's this direction, staff, go make it work. Turns out, there wasn't enough there to actually give them the proper resources they need to make that happen. So I can see why giving them two weeks to look into things beforehand is beneficial, also preventing that potential gotcha moment when we put something on the agenda, and nobody has an answer because they didn't look into it first.
Sorry, that's for distraction. Other comments?
Councilmember Bonham.
Councilmember Bonham.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to assure the staff that we know you're doing your best, from the city manager to management leadership team to all the lower-ranked staff, everyone. I mean, I've been impressed by many people that I've met, and they're going far and beyond of what their task to do. It's amazing. So just beware, we know you're doing an awesome job. Thank you very much, city manager and everyone else. But looking at the big picture, I don't think, it's not that they're doing their best, they're doing their best, but we as the city council are to set policy, direction. So the city administration is like a huge machinery, working and going its way. And now the city council is trying to say, hey, move to the right of bed, or move to the left, and it's time-consuming, it slows in, because they're already working at full speed and doing things. That's where the conflicts arise, I believe. So it's, it's not that, you know, there are any doubts about them doing their best, it's just policy direction that we're trying to impose, and at least I feel the resistance. And going to the item, make sure agenda items are in line with goals. Well, we set goals. One of the goals that's most important to me is public safety and environmental resiliency. We've had mudslides, land slides, you know, we have Chevron, we have Hayward Fault, we may have a huge earthquake, we have a network of hazardous material pipelines underneath the city, we have a tank farm by Phillips 66 at the port with no actually fire department over there, at least Chevron has its own fire department, they don't have anything. There are so many issues. We don't know if those pipelines are going under the school, under clinics, hospital. So each time I approach the city manager with a suggestion regarding public safety, she says, but it's coming from you, I have seven bosses, you need to have a mandate from the entire city council to do something. So basically, no actionable solution comes out of it. And I would like to invite us all, the city council and the city manager, to use this opportunity to find a solution. How do we want to go about it?
But let me ask you a question. You spent two evenings, or was it three, establishing your goals and objectives. Did any of these get on that list?
I, we went into some details, but not all of them. I mean, public safety is a major thing, and there are many things that can be done, don't take much effort, don't take much resources. Just to give you an example, in the city of Berkeley and in the city of Oakland, their fire safety council worked very closely with the fire department, with the city manager, they have joint meetings. In the city of Richmond, there is a huge resistance. They don't want to do any of that. They want to do their own job the way they were doing, and as I said, they're doing an awesome job, excellent job. The city manager gave me the good news that she has allocated $50,000 for fire access lanes. I appreciate it, because I've seen fire access lanes with huge trees grown at the center of it, meaning in the past few decades, nobody took care of our fire access lanes. But that should be the floor, the basic minimum. We should be able to do a lot more than that.
I'm not sure I understand the resources that would be required to do the things that you articulated, but I'm still gonna bring you back to your goals, because if those didn't make that, maybe they should have, and maybe there should be a need to revisit it. But I think what I'm hearing is that, when I heard you go through that list, I've been hearing more than a couple of meetings. And so if their dedicated resources are gonna be required to do those things, and for me, I was the city manager, I am sorry to say, at the time of the earthquake and the fire storm. And so I clearly understand the importance and the need and the urgency of doing those things. But if these things require more than a few meetings and require some dedicated resources, we need to go back and revisit the goals, because I don't remember those details being on there.
Excuse me, I, I'm sorry, I think like Shiva from the mayor's office is there to speak, but I don't want to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry, and she's been standing there? And you're just saying something? You're the vice mayor.
This is what I spoke.
Actually, council members should, should speak first, so, Councilmember Robinson.
So I feel like I'll just make a comment about the fire safety.
You're good.
That's what I'm very wrong. So as I remember it, fire safety was on our goals list, as well as, you know, there's a big bucket that you mentioned, that is public safety and environmental kind of threats. And then a part of that, I believe, I believe we voted, fire safety is one of the priorities. I can't quite remember now, and I can't bring up the final list. And so I feel like now, you know, that just gives the permission to bring things forward that are, you know, it is one, it's on the goals list. But then the work isn't done, right? The work that we, we have to do as council members is, first do that behind-the-scenes work where you meet with, you know, fire and, you know, public safety, or whoever else it is, to come up with what your agenda item would be, where you would, in a thoughtful way, direct staff to create a plan or what it is to address that issue. And that's the agenda item that would come on, and I think that that's what we've been wanting and looking for, is a well-thought-through process to arrive at a comprehensive fire plan that actually takes in the expertise that we have on staff, that takes in the expertise of, of projects and committees that are already moving forward, that are already working on fire safety, and brings it together into a plan. So I feel like that's the work of council, to, you know, create that agenda item after you've, you know, talked to the experts that we have on our staff, to get their advice on how it should be phrased, and then bring that forward so that we could vote on it, and, you know, hear it, vote on it, add anything, and then give direction. So I feel like the, the pieces of the puzzle are there, but we do have to do some work to advance policy.
Thank you for that comment, and I hope I didn't say that it wasn't on goals, I said, I couldn't remember whether it was on the goals and objectives, but I think your comments are very helpful. And we didn't go through this exercise for the point of going through an exercise. I think that people invested an awful lot in those two or three meetings we had, coming up with those goals and objectives. So we do need to turn our attention back to that, and then figure out, though, amongst those list of goals, how you're gonna prioritize those in the coming months. But you don't need to convince me of the urgency of earthquake safety and fire safety. I left before the locusts showed up. Yes.
All right. Well, no, I said, I said council members should go first, because, because this meeting is ours. So go ahead, Councilmember Zapata, and then Councilmember, I mean, sorry, Vice Mayor Jimenez.
We're working on it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez.
I would like to, I'm confused by the second square on the top, review of what is a conflict of interest and ethics. Is that for us to review? Because it's, it's coming from the MLT, so I'm just trying to get more information on that. Should we, is there something that we should be working on more? Can I get a little more context on that? I don't know if there is.
Any comments on that? Review of what is a conflict of interest?
Is it on the agenda items? Is it on the what we do, what we say? I just want to know a little more about that. I'm not sure what, how to take that comment.
I can't fill that in with any more color than what's up there. Does anybody want to further elaborate on that?
Or is that just further training for all of us to make sure that we know what a conflict of interest and ethics is?
Well, conflicts of interest...
I mean, I know what it is, but I just want to know, like, what more of this context of where this comes from.
I should let Ms. Moore speak, but I'm going to preempt her. Conflicts of interest and ethics apply to everybody who is on the payroll. Everybody who's on the payroll. Conflicts of interest and ethics apply. You have had no instances, that I'm aware of, that would lead to what I've been reading across the bay, but we all need to be laser-like on not just whether or not there is a conflict of interest, whether or not there is an appearance of conflict of interest. whether or not there is an appearance of conflict of interest. And so that applies to everybody who's on the payroll. Does anybody want to add anything to that or say anymore about it? Or, uh, counselor, do you want to correct what I just said?
No, I think you're accurate. You know, I mean, I think the one thing I'll say is, and I think in my mind, uh, the council has done a, a good job overall raising, you know, potential conflict issues ahead of time so they can get some additional support from our office. Um, and kind of take steps to either recuse themselves or, um, you know, providing, you know, they need additional guidance potentially from the FPBC on issues. So, um, I did not write this one, so I'm not totally sure. Um, you know, I think just checking in with, with our office on conflict issues, you know, under the political reform act or under common law conflicts of interest or as you say, kind of the appearance of a conflict and potential bias. So I think that's all I've got.
Okay, so if there are no more council members, uh, I would like my chief of staff to take the floor.
Okay. Oh, we do have, we do have another, we have another set of slides, don't we? Yeah, we have another set of slides now quickly we need to go through. And this is, could you bring that up? What does the council need from the MLT? We don't want to miss that. So put your thinking hats, which you always have on, because I'm sure thoughts will occur to you that are not up here. But what I heard from you, doing a good job, but not as open to suggestions as could be. Bureaucratic. Need to return to full-time city attorney. Need to know ongoing challenges staff is facing. Need frank and candid discussion around homelessness, metrics, measures of success. Have more clarity about what is needed. Report on the status of major issues or emails for quick updates. Okay, questions, comments, clarifications? The first one, um, is, again, I didn't count up your who said what.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. But what is happening now?
Uh, I, I, I think we, I think the chief of staff was indisposed. Uh, anyway, she's back.
She's back, okay. You have the floor. You have one minute.
One minute.
I'm kidding. Give me time to finish my cookie.
Um, okay, for, I, sorry, I was halfway to my car. Um, Chiba Mishik, chief of staff to the mayor. Um, so I'm chiming in sort of having seen both sides. I'm part of agenda review every week and have relationships with many of the council members and am also staff. So, you know, I think I was called up in regard to the two-week leave time on agenda items. Um, I'll be very frank with the council that the agenda item, the agenda process is incredibly chaotic and burdensome on staff. I understand that there are some council members that prepare their agenda items in advance and are thorough. That is usually not the case, to be frank. Um, and it's a big problem. It, when we're doing agenda review, we often don't know what the agenda items are about. They don't have a title, they don't have attachments, no one's ever seen them before. Trina is basically being asked to write them twenty-four hours in advance. Um, to give some perspective, I've been working on a pretty basic agenda item for the past three days and it's consumed all of my time. And it's a relatively basic agenda item. I've been on calls with Shannon, with Dave, with the mayor. Um, and so I think that the conception of how long these items take to put into the system, to review, to talk to appropriate staff is something that is frankly not being appreciated in this conversation. And, um, so I think my personal opinion is this is low hanging fruit that the council can give staff to show that council appreciates staff capacity issues. Um, and I, I think at the very least, we are not seeing, um, and this is something that the mayor attempts to reiterate often. We are not seeing even the current process being followed of turning stuff in by twelve. Um, and what that really actually means is that it should be fully uploaded by twelve, not that it should be turned in via email at twelve oh five with no attachments and no title, et cetera. Um, to give another example of sort of, uh, disconnect between capacity and requests, we often get requests for proclamations, certificates of recognition on Friday at four P M. Um, and for a Sunday. And, you know, that can go to Trina, but, you know, it also comes from our office. Then the mayor is asked to sign on, which then brings in staff. And then we're running around town like delivering proclamations to an organization we've never heard of. So, I mean, that's just a small example. Those are very simple things to do, um, relative to some of the policies brought forward. So on a basic level, if you, if council does not want to extend out timeline, um, which I would strongly advise you all to consider for all of our well-being, um, I think that I would suggest that the council members, particularly newer ones, perhaps schedule a meeting with our office to discuss some of the process around bringing agenda items and perhaps get, receive some training on how agenda items can be researched and more fully fleshed out. I think that maybe more senior council members have more experience doing that. Um, but because we have such a new council, it, it truly is a problem. Yeah, I, I'm not overstating that it's a problem and it, it feels pretty bad every week to see what we get.
Thank you. Well said, from someone who does all the work. Most of the work in my office in terms of agendas. Um, I, I wanted to add one more item in terms of, uh, uh, choosing your agenda item. A lot of times I've gotten agenda items that are not time sensitive. So, so, you know, if it's not time sensitive and our agenda is so packed, I, I, I think, uh, as, in, in consideration of council and staff, we should ask ourselves, does this need to happen now? And then, and then wait until it is time for it to be presented.
And do we do that? Do we, do we call the council members back and say that, uh, we have a loaded agenda? This does not seem to be time sensitive.
I have had that conversation with council members.
All right, good. Because that closes the communications.
Right, but, but, but it would be a, a lot easier if I didn't have to have those conversations. If, if the council members actually was able to ask themselves, is this time sensitive? Do I need to do it now?
I, I just wanted to suggest, and this is like what, uh, council member McGlaughlin had been talking about, is that I think like the time is because maybe, um, like we, it's both ways, like we don't have the staff. Uh, but we just have one or two people who do all the work for us. So in that sense, I, I, I want to ask council members that if they have an item that, like each of us write the agenda report because we are the ones who know what the item is about. If we just say, tell Trina, this is the, the title. She has to kind of like come out with, with all the research and all of that. So, and then if you have, uh, this is one. And then if you have a presentation, um, and it like, one thing that I do with the presentation is sometimes help, get help from the presenter to write the agenda item and bring all the presentation, not to esp- and, and, and make sure and with that, that communication is going to the presenter. Um, so it's not Trina trying to come out with like, oh, with all this, um, information to the presenter. Um, so I just want to make sure that if we are okay with that, we can do this work. So write your own agendas. And if you have a presentation and if you have a presenter, that you are the one who coordinates with the presenter what they are going to put to send it to Trina. So Trina's work will be, uh, download that to the escribe with everything. And if, if everything is known by the twelve o'clock, then, uh, it, it will have to just make sure that it's not going to, to be on that agenda because not all the, the paper needed was presented. Um, and I know that it is difficult. And I think like another thing will be that if city council, we have some staff that can support that because it's, it's, it's a really, it's a, it's a time commitment and it's really difficult. So maybe this is another conversation that we have about what is the support also city council will need in order to really, uh, do the work of bringing agenda items, working on policies and so forth.
Council member Robinson?
Time. Um, so as this new council member, um, and I would like to say that, you know, we had these great trainings that were going on at the city manager put together on various topics when we first came in. But one topic that was not covered was how to do agenda reports and how to get things on the agenda. So unless I missed it, did I miss it? No, I didn't miss it. We were never taught how to do this, ever, you know? And so basically, you know, the way I learned was looking at other agenda reports and talking to Trina and talking to other council members and trying to figure it out. And, um, you know, that's probably not the best way to, to learn because you're going to make a bunch of mistakes. Um, I've only put forward like four agenda items in the year in four months. And I, you know, I draft it and then I give it to Trina for feedback, you know, to help me edit it and, and whatnot. And, you know, I, I just would strongly suggest that there is a training for new council members so we understand exactly what is needed. We understand what that process, what the, that process is for staff, but that, what it looks like behind the scenes. Um, and what all things, you know, why we would want to put together the strongest agenda report in terms of attachments and whatnot. I think that would be really helpful. Um, if, if not, we're, we're all trying to figure it out in the dark, again, without dedicated staff, without whatever.
Well, are we still in the learning process or have the new members figured it out?
It's a continual learning process.
Do you mind if I jump in here for a second?
Yes.
So, so I, I think what I, I forgot to circulate, is that, um, I think a week or two ago, I'm forgetting the exact date, we conducted a training with MLT staff and, and other, you know, city staff to review three things. One was agenda writing, which LaShonda White, uh, city manager's office, did a great job at kind of walking through the agenda report template and kind of in each section, how to draft the sections. So, and she was funny during the presentation. So I think that, um, I, I will circulate that because I think that would be helpful. You know, our part was the RLO process and rollout of that. And then the rollout of the new contract template. But I think the agenda right, reporting piece would be helpful. And I agree with you that there should be proper training for new council members on several issues. And that's one of them. And I'm actually working with Kimberly Chen in our office to pull that together, uh, to have that ready for, you know, January.
Just, just to add in on that, I, I think I would like to add our, our LOs to that too because we were told that we need to do formal ones, but not how to do them.
If I may, I, and Pam, I defer to you. I thought when we had our first meeting, we, we covered that. So I'll look at the, um, at the, the outline and the packet that we put forward. But there was a lot of things that, um, were covered by the city attorney's office that were slightly different from what we originally proposed.
I think things were mentioned, but not, again, not how to do them.
All right, did that answer that question? And did we respond to the comments?
I would, uh, I would like to, um, it says, what does the city council need from the management leadership team? The middle one need to return to full-time city attorney? That is on the council. That is our decision. So, uh, uh, we should, um, uh, have that discussion in closed session.
Can I just say something quickly?
Council member, yes.
I just wanted to say I use ChatGPT for agenda reports. It's awesome. I highly recommend it to my colleagues and to the city staff. Saves a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
ChatGPT, it's an AI, artificial intelligence. Just say what item you have and ask it to write the staff report. It writes the whole thing for you.
Oh, wow. Okay, council member Sepeda.
Thank you. Um, I, I want to start off with thanking the MLT, uh, for your partnership in this past year and four months or so. Um, through, I've been learning slowly sometimes all the, where everything is and how everything works. But I, I appreciate the partnership. And with that in mind as well, thinking of, uh, something that I had heard is the difference between maybe this council to previous councils. And I try to keep that in mind whenever I make requests is that previous councils probably looked at, they all maybe focus on one item because they were voted on at large. And we are super focused on our di- districts. And we also look at the whole city, right? So we look at both. But when we are out in the community, so this is just some, some thought there that when we're out in the community, we can't go that far without seeing our constituents and they come up and they talk to us about the issues and concerns. So just know that, that the requests come not because we want to bug you, uh, but because we like you. We like you and want to work with you, but also it's, it's constituents that, that are asking for that request there. So our districts are going to be a little more hyper focused on the different issues and they have a lot more access to us than they probably did before. And I know that for myself, whenever I called on my council members before, I still have the issues, right? And I'm, now I'm working on them. So I know that is a little bit different than, than it is before. So I want to thank you again for that. Um, and then what I would add, add in here, and it's kind of in there, um, the follow-ups and the delivery, I, I know that I, in my emails, I would sometimes ask, please provide me a timeline and a timeframe. And that's not for me to micromanage. I, it's for me to tell my constituents, I will get back to you by this day and here's the timeframe that we think we're going to be able to resolve this by. I don't expect miracles. I don't want to put more pressure on staff. I just need to update people. It's because the buck stops with us, right? With me as a council member. And I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. So I'm never going to say, well, it's so-and-so that never got back to me and they're not doing their job. Never going to say that. You guys are always doing a great job. So the bugs always going to stop with me. It's never going to go nowhere else. But that's why I need that information. I want to make sure that I can go back to my constituents and say, here's what we're working on and how we're working on together. And if it takes a little longer, I'll go back and give another update. But we just need those updates. That's, the community needs those updates. Um, and then in regards to the goals, just keeping in mind that the goals are going to change. And then thinking about short-term versus long-term, day-to-day versus future goals. There's a lot, in my mind, there's a lot of different buckets because the short-term could be issues like potholes. And then long-term could be, we're going to completely redo one of the streets. So our constituents think of this a little bit different. And I want to make sure that we're all thinking about it similarly on what the constituency is thinking about and how they act and react. We get the opportunity today to be able to work together, to plan and to have a conversation and, and talk about schedules and, hey, we need the agenda item two weeks before and we can maybe agree or disagree, but we're having this great conversation. Our constituents will not have that opportunity sometimes. So we have to try to help them out a little bit, but their expectations are always going to be, this should have been done yesterday. So just putting that out there. But again, thank you all for your partnership and thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding, is that our last slide? You mean we have more? Who wrote all this stuff? Is there something after this one? I'm going home.
Yeah, fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes.
I've been standing up here for three hours. All right. All right. We've got 10 minutes and we have 30 slides. We don't have 30, but we've got, how many? Three sets of these? Okay. Okay, all right, let's hit it. What the council needs from MLT. Keep informed and set realistic timelines. Establish regular communications, recognizing that staff is stressed. Actively engage with constituents who have several issues and concerns and expect a response. No response is not helpful. Provide a better sense of what staff must get on the agenda. Questions, comments? We've talked about some of these, but.
Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to say that, like, having a, a response to, or the, the things that are happening is, is really important. And I think, like, city staff is doing their best to do, for instance, I just got all the work on Andrade and San Pablo, and it was me just emailing them and say like, hey, there is this issue here. And then sure enough, the next day, they respond. And it was a team effort. So I really want to appreciate everybody who worked there. So I, I feel like staff is trying to, is trying and is doing the best that they can. Another thing that I have seen that is really good is when the, like, residents are doing public comments in person in the, in the chambers. And if it's something that any staff can help, they kind of like go and talk to the NSI and just trying to respond. I think one of the things that is, is more kind of like the issue and sometimes for us is kind of like the short and long-term projects, where the, we, we need some more response in terms of like timeline and timeframes, so we can go back to the community and say, well, this is not going to be today, right? But it's happening or, or this is the process. For instance, like, the, the stop sign, right? There is a process. So we need to kind of like have that information so we can convey that information of the, or, or that the, the, the city staff have, responds to that constituent directly as well. And again, it goes back to needing more staff who are doing that. So, but I, I really appreciate the proactive that we see in the city staff to respond to some of these staff.
Thank you. Other comments regarding these five? Next slide. Council would like more communication with staff. City manager tries to bridge gap between council and staff. Want to know what is going to be on the agenda before it is published. Items should not be on the agenda unless they align with goals. Would like more data, more information regarding costs and timelines. Questions or comments? Let me ask you a question about the third one. Want to know what is going to be on the agenda before it is published. How would that process work? Staff, how would that process work?
I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the past, I'm recalling, council members have asked about that as well. And there was an attempt to send out a draft agenda, be, like a few days before the final agenda comes out. And, you know, that, that, you know, it won't be all the background documents and such, but it'll, I don't know how staff feels about that. And I do want to add that, you know, I do think that, I thought two weeks was too much, but I can see having a more, you know, putting the deadline for council a little bit earlier than that Wednesday at noon. But that's, we've already talked about that. But I don't know how staff feels about circulating a draft agenda a few days before the finalized agenda.
Council, Vice Mayor, ten minutes.
One thing that we add for was an scheduled agenda, where all the items that were supposed to go in different time, we have it. And city manager shared that with us. So that is one, like, I think, like, more than just having the agenda, because.
Timeline.
Timeline. But at least the timeline that it will tell us, well, this agenda that public works or somebody is working or community service is working on, is going to be on May 7 or like, because I, I think like in other public agencies, they had that, like, you have a kind of like a list of agenda items and you at least know where potentially they are going to be presented. And some of that was shared with us. The issue is that it's, it's known in a, a Google Doc, that is a work document, and it has to be updated all the time. So if it was part of a Google Doc, then we will see the updates by staff. That will be sent.
I don't know, city attorney.
Can I add to it before the city attorney?
I'm still trying to figure out how this process would work. If you circulate a draft agenda amongst yourselves.
Yeah, and then.
That, well, doesn't that trigger that you need to make it public? You need to post it somewhere?
Also, if questions are asked, like, how would you control for questions from which council member about which item? Now, I'd have to, we'd have to think through that further. I don't, I don't know, Councilmember McLaughlin, when that was or the process for circulating the draft. I just, I don't have a memory of that, but I wasn't involved at that level.
It was back when Bill Lindsay was manager, but I don't think it lasted very long. So perhaps there were problems with that. I do remember there was an effort to do that for a short period of time anyway.
Well, we can probably look at it. But in my mind, it raises a whole bunch of questions.
Yeah, I think there'd be some process questions around, you know, I think there'd be, it'd be fodder for Brown Act violations, you know, even if you're asking staff questions about agenda items before they're published.
Councilmember Bana, but before she speaks, I want to remind people that we still have public comment.
We do still have public comment and we have seven minutes left.
Okay, so keep that in mind. Go ahead.
I'll make it quick then. So it'd be nice if you could get heads up about, about big items. Like, there comes an item with a huge attachment and you already have plans for your weekends and all Monday and Tuesday are taken. And how are you going to do your homework? If, if you give us heads up, then at least we leave sometime open. We know a big item is coming. But then it's, it's a shock. Sometimes you see, it's a relief, you know, easy items, presentation, thank God. Sometimes you're bombarded.
Talk about stress.
I'm not the only one who makes Councilmember Willis laugh, right?
Henry?
Yes?
Councilmember Bana, that's a great idea, but we are constantly in finals mode here. So we're, we're, please, please remember, we're, we're still in the rebuilding mode. So now we're, we're working on stopping the leaks. Okay? So no more water can come in and, and that process is, is hopefully subsiding and less water is coming into the boat. And we're, we're on track not to be the Titanic and crashing into, into anything, okay? But I, I really appreciate that you, that the council is acknowledging the work that staff does and everyone is doing their best. And we are all committed to continuous improvement. But I, I do want to personally say, I think this is the, the best committed team that we've ever had in MLT. And I could not be the Richmond City Manager without their help. And I, I want everyone, all the council to know that everyone is extremely committed and wants to do better. And I think at, over time, we'll start gaining momentum and continuing to do better as we have over the last, you know, year plus. I definitely feel like we're starting to get positive momentum. And I think for those folks who are out at Earth Day, when we have events like that, it makes me, it shows that we're really building that positive momentum.
Okay. Comments regarding any of the other slides up there? If not, we're nearing the end. Budget report was great. Appreciate timely communications. Losing accountability. Need community trust. Trust comes up again. Accountability, you've spoken to that. Our collective accountability, one to the community and obviously to each other. Any questions or comments regarding that? Trust is going to keep coming up and we're going to have to keep coming back to it. How do we build it and how do we maintain it? Yes, Councilmember Bana?
I just wanted to thank the city manager and his staff for quickly responding to residents' concerns that are serious or safety or health or those kind of things. And in general, they're very good. Just wanted to say thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Is there one more? Oh, there's no discussion. We don't have time for that. We've had lots of discussion. The mayor has called for public comment.
Yes. Public comment is open. Do we have any speakers?
And tell them how much time they have, Mr. Mayor.
We have one speaker and you'll be allowed.
How many speakers?
One.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Martinez, Council. Good Lord. So, thank you, Henry, for this wonderful workshop. I really got a lot out of it. So I'm going to do my three things. So what the mayor has requested is, is for, for the speakers to advise by the rules. So, for example, you would, I don't understand how people would allow to use obscene language at a council meeting. That sets a bad example for me because I'm used to hearing that kind of language. But I do not allow, I do not allow it to have it at a council meeting. I treat all the council members with respect, which leads to my next point, is I'm pulling items off consent. Do I have to remind the council that you have until 2:00 PM of the day of the meeting? If you have a specific concern about an item, that's what staff is here for. Come on now. As a member of the public, I, I get a response from staff like that. And if I can do it, you all can do the same. It would make the meeting so much easier and quicker. And then, the third thing, treated with your staff with respect. Let me, let me give you an example. Last Tuesday's meeting, when you had the finance department, they were waiting very patiently to give their presentation on the port. They had to wait till 11 o'clock in the evening. So let me remind you again, that you need to move them up to somewhere along the agenda. That way they don't have to stay here till 11 or 12 o'clock at night. That's not fair to them. So keep that in mind when, as your next, part of your next steps.
That concludes.
Are there any other speakers? If not?
No other speakers.
Then, next steps, do, do we go there or do we adjourn?
I don't, did I put a slide up there for next steps? I hope not.
Yeah. Next steps are biggie steps.
Oh, yes. Here is a major next step. I made a reference to the rules and procedures discussion. You gave us a lot of input. You gave it back to the staff to work with the city clerk, the city attorney, and come back with essentially a final draft for you to edit, modify, and then adopt. And that is in the process right now. Do we have an estimated date of when we'll have that ready? Do we have some sense of when we'll have the rules and procedures back to the council when we've made our edits and comments? Still circulating, I know that. City clerk's working on it. City attorney's working on it. City manager's working on it. But I need to give them some sense of, and remember, we need realistic timeframes. Don't promise we're going to bring it back on May 1 because we're not going to do that. But don't tell them it'll be September either. So somewhere between tonight, when are you going on recess? In June?
July.
We need to have it back before they go on recess. Is that too much of a challenge? Is that realistic?
We were, we were thinking of September.
Really?
The first meeting in September.
Oh, my God. Can you hold until September on these rules and procedures?
Considering that we have the budget to do, I believe.
Mayor just saved you. He said, considering that we have the budget. He thinks that's more immediate and more important. So he has, let the record show. The mayor has given the staff grace. You have until September. Now, you can't embarrass me and let October come and we still haven't brought this back. After the mayor has saved us.
Well, there's different ways to look at it. Maybe I didn't give them grace. I gave them orders to work on the budget.
All right. So September is our commitment.
The first meeting in September?
Okay, September.
Quick question?
Councilmember.
Somebody's asking a question. Where is it?
Yeah. So on the, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the rules and procedures modifications, I believe that's going to be taken from our input at a previous meeting.
Yes.
But we want to, we'll want to make sure that it's, it's, it's clear. So I, I just want to make sure when you present it to the council in September, that it's presented as a draft.
That's right.
Or if you, or if you want to circulate it to us with BCCing us ahead of time so we can clarify it. Or, or this could be done at the council meeting. But I think the, it's the council's rules and procedures. So we have to be the last word. And I'm not saying that you wouldn't agree with that, but I just want to make sure that.
I did not hear, nor did, I think, that we left this, that when we bring it back to you, it'll be city clerk call a roll that you approve it. And you have a chance to see what we worked on. And then we maybe at a future meeting, then we're going to ask the city clerk to call a roll. That's what I had in mind. Yes.
I just hope that what we get actually reflects what everyone heard here tonight. We heard a lot of objections to some of the things that were brought forward. So if you include those things, we're going to have a contentious meeting where we're fighting over these things we've already told you we don't agree with. So, you know, I hope, I hope that we were heard tonight. So we don't have to go there.
Yeah, I, what I.
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, through, Mayor, would you like to have an ad hoc for this? So that way we can, in advance of the meeting, it can be reviewed? Or just put it on for you all to review it and then we'll come back with a study session?
I, I, we don't have time to do that. Now, we can do that at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Are we clear? Now, to Councilmember Robinson's comment though, we do transcribe these notes. Yeah. And so we will be providing those to everybody. Okay. Well, thank you all very much for tolerating me yet again. I don't know whether you enjoyed it, but I did. I'm just tired of standing up for three hours.
Well.
Can I get an applause? I've been standing up for three hours.
Thank you so much. With that applause, we are adjourned. Oh, I also want to adjourn this meeting in memory of a six-year-old who, go, go ahead.
No, go ahead. You can finish that, please. It's important.
Yes. And I have to, I had the name and I misplaced it, but let me see if I can find it. In honor of six-year-old who passed from an accident, Amadeo. And I don't have his last name.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's the six-year-old that was died in a traffic, was killed in a traffic collision on cutting in, and Carlson, I believe. Correct? Yeah, very, very tragic situation. I was going to add to that with, we had the loss of a longtime Richmond resident who was involved with the arts and music. Her name is Cindy Feitman. She was involved with the Richmore Village Neighborhood Council. She passed on somewhat, you know, several days ago. She passed on somewhat, you know, several days ago. And she and her partner were very involved with the city in the arts and culture. And I will repeat this again at another council meeting because I'm not sure how, how this gets to the public. But on a regular council meeting, I will repeat it again and maybe we could repeat the six-year-old.
Yes. Uh, the six-year-old's name is Amadeo Alvarez. He was only six years old when he, when his life was cut short by a tragic car accident. So, uh, he does have a GoFundMe and at this point, uh, they have raised the amount that they have asked for, but that doesn't mean that we can't continue to contribute because these situations require as much love as possible in as many ways as we can express that love. So there's a GoFundMe for Armando Alvarez and it's, the fundraiser's organized by Jasmine Douville, D O U V I L L E. So please, if you, if you can, donate to this GoFundMe. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.